We're pleased to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And by way of roll call, all members of the council are present today. And this week, Councilmember Karen Lang is responsible for our opening ceremony. Councilwoman?
Today being the 11th anniversary of 9/11, and this is where my emotions are going to get out of control. That day, I think, changed our nation. I didn't have a flag hanging in my front yard, and I think we now have a flag in our front yard, and I think a lot more citizens put flags in their yards. I think a lot more of our kids joined the military, went into public service as a response to that. We've lost dear friends in that war, and this day really means a lot to me. And I'm very honored today. The West Valley City Fire Department's Honor Guard is going to do our flag ceremony for us, and I'd like to turn the time over to them.
Can I please have all of you join me in deciding the flag. Like a nation to fight for the United States of America and to the Republic of its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't think there could have been a more appropriate thing we could have done on this day to remember the events 11 years ago. We come down to item four tonight, which is special recognitions, and here's where we'd like to acknowledge our scouts that are with us tonight. Is there a member of the scout group who could come up to the microphone and introduce their troop and tell us what badge you're working on and where you live roughly?
I'm Parker Zollinger with Troop 171. I live over by Valley Junior High, and we're doing citizenship with the community merit badge.
Great, we welcome you. Did I see another scout group there in the back? Maybe I didn't. Probably good-looking people, anyway. Oh, I did, aha. All right, come on up.
Hi, I'm Ron Moley, and I'm with the West Valley Nightboard with Troop 1675, and we're working on the citizenship merit badge too.
All right, thank you. We welcome you also. Any other scout groups I have? Okay. We come to item five this evening, which is the approval of the August 28 meetings. Minutes. Councilmembers, any discussion or motion on those minutes?
May we move for approval of the August 28 minutes?
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes passed. We come to item six, which is some awards and ceremonies, and we have a special one this month, our Employee of the Month, and Councilmember Steve Beuler will make that presentation on our behalf. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Zach Hatch of the Fire Department has been nominated and named Employee of the Month. And I see a lot of firefighters here. Mr. Hatch, would you make yourself known? Okay, thank you. This nomination was submitted by Battalion Chief Dean Williams. I am nominating firefighter Zach Hatch for Employee of the Month. Each year, the University of Utah Burn Unit sponsors a two-week camp at the Tracy Wigwam Camp up Mill Creek Canyon. The camp is for parents who are for patients who have been treated in the burn unit. Fire departments from the professional firefighters of Utah take turns cooking for the kids and staff. This year, on Sunday, August 5th, the West Valley Fire Department sent up about 20 off-duty members and their wives to cook the dinner. The dinner included tacos with all of the fixings, punch and drinks, and ice cream cups, and gummy worms for dessert. The Fire Department was responsible for lining the menu, purchasing the food, preparing the meal, and cleaning up. This year was a tremendous success, with over 130 meals served to the staff and kids. The theme was Star Wars, and the meal was accompanied by movies and Star Wars characters. Zach coordinated the dinner, which included planning the menu, lining up the kitchen help from the Fire Department, the cooking, preparation, and cleanup. We were originally told there would be about 80 meals served, but Zach planned ahead, and we served about 130. Everyone left happy and full, and gave a tremendous round of applause to the West Valley City Fire Department for the effort. This was not only a good reflection for the Fire Department at West Valley City, but it was a great service to the kids to help ease the pain and discomfort of their injuries. Some of the kids are still being treated, and almost all of them still bear the scars of their accidents. Zach coordinated a tremendous service to the kids to help them have fun at the camp with the councilors and the firefighters. The smiles that are on the faces of these injured kids as they struggle with their changed lives makes the whole effort worthwhile, and Zach should be commended for coordinating it. So, Mr. Hatch, you are the Employee of the Month. We'd like to stand and give you a round of applause.
Thank you, Zach. We see you have a great support team here with you, friends and family, and anyone you want to point out or embarrass while you have the chance?
Well, we're good places.
And don't worry about knocking the city manager's name tag at. It's not the first or the last time, and we appreciate all you do for the city, and may the force be with you. We also, this council may give out our Quarterly Division Award, and we have a very special one today, and Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Corey Rushton will be presenting this on our behalf today.
Thank you, and it's nice that we get to honor another group of individuals that help keep our city safe. And so, the Quarterly Division Award goes to the West Valley City Crossing Guards, and I will read the nomination letter that's submitted by Dale Ann Wright. It says, "I would like to nominate West Valley City School Crossing Guards to receive the award for outstanding division for the months of April, May, and June 2012. These dedicated individuals are charged to see that thousands of children arrive to school safety and home again. There are 50 employees who are assigned to 23 elementary schools and one charter school. These employees work with the complicated equation of students plus parents plus motorists plus weather equals infinite challenges. The bottom line is, though, they do this for the love of the children of West Valley City. They have minimal contact with one another and city employees, and at times feel like islands unto themselves. Please consider these dedicated people as great examples of ambassadors of our city worthy of being recognized for their substantial contributions to West Valley City." Thank you. And I'd like all the crossing guards to stand up, and I drove on 3100 today, and so that was probably about half of you I passed today. But we would like to have you stand and come up here, and we'd like to shake your hands, and then all gather here in the front for one big photo op. And Dale Ann, can we get you to come up also? I'd like to shake your hand too. Okay.
We apologize for the traffic jam and all the crossing guards. Lick your lips and say crosswalk. We think so much of our crossing guards and our firefighters that they're free to leave the meeting early if they'd like. Now, they're always welcome to stay, but they're welcome to enjoy the rest of the evening, too. All right, thank you, Mr. Rushton. We come to item seven tonight, which is our comment period. And the first part of the comment period, the comment period in total can only last 30 minutes by our rules, and the first part is the public comment period. We have two people who have signed up to speak with us tonight, and they have up to five minutes each to let us know what's on their mind. Now, the first one that signed up is Josh Heinemann. Josh has been here before, so you know the drill, so come on up, Josh, the microphone.
Josh Sherman, 319 South, 40 Inner West, West Valley City, Utah, 4120. That was a really good presentation. I also want to thank the police and firefighters and everybody in this room, so I love West Valley. And I'm happy to be a citizen of this city. And I come before you for an update, just to clarify where we are on funding a skate park for West Valley. I got off the phone, I left a message with Kimmy. She is Peter Carrum's secretary today. And before I left, I left for the whole summer, and now I'm back, I just got back two weeks ago. And the county is still in with their portion of the funds to let everybody know there's been 400,000 allocated for a park in West Valley from the county. And it's not directly allocated to this project, but they thought it'd be a good way to get this project rolling. And then with the resolution that passed when I was out of the country, hopefully that will move in the right direction of it, and that's happening so far, give or take. And when further donations are made, we can address the location and funding and further move in this direction. So I have a sponsorship letter that I was going to forward to Wayne for his approval before I send it out to potential donations. I have three foundations and eight corporations that I'm ready to send it out to and to individuals. So with that, hopefully we can get a response and then move forward with the city and make sure that everything legally is allocated because there'll be some, hopefully, large donations. And then we'll move from then, and then we'll convene. I just wanted to let you know I'm back in the country, and I'm happy to keep this rolling and with your guys' help over the years. I appreciate all you've done as well to move this forward as well. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Josh. Lee Joron? Did I say that right? Probably not.
I have a full name and ship. That last name is Johnson.
Johnson?
I'm from Ogden, with a nonprofit. We're the men, we're called the Men of Justice and Compassion. The acronym is MOJAC. We are having a walk at the State Capitol in October, October 20th. I sent a letter to someone at the city council, someone received a letter from us today or yesterday, and we were asking West Valley City employees that they would come out and support this walk against men and women who batter women and children. There are women who batter husbands, there are women who are aggressive in relationships. But I just want to bring the attention that today is 9/11, and in 9/11 2001, over 3,000 people were killed in one instance. However, since 9/11, and this is the thing that we as a society don't really grasp, since 9/11, over 13,500 men have killed their wives and intimate partners. Since that time, 13,500 or so women have been murdered, which Susan Powell, I believe, is one of those women. I am in contact with Chuck and Judy Cox, and we are trying very hard so people can come out and pay attention to what's going on, you know, like in family violence. We want people to know that domestic violence is real. It is a danger and a reality, not like breast cancer awareness that is based on a promise and a hope to find a cure. We put so much emphasis in the health of a woman, breast cancer awareness and all these sort of things, but the safety of a woman and a child, according to Abraham Maslow, should be the highest of highest priority, but our society doesn't see it that way. So I'm asking that West Valley would come out and support our walk. We have T-shirts that you can purchase on our website. Perpetrators are like lions, tigers, bears, hyenas, oh mine, lions, tigers, and bears. We have another one. Men who batter women and children are punks. Punks stands for psychological unstable, not knowing sensibility. So this is real, people. We can sit here, and just like Chuck, Mr. Cox told me over the phone, he said, "When good men do nothing, evil flourishes." Josh Powell, in my estimation, was like that male lion, because we know male lions kill their own cubs. He killed his own children in a fiery inferno. Are we just going to sit here and take this kind of abuse? We just, as a society, we just going to sit here and take it and not fight back? Where's the moral outrage that all of us should have against perpetrators? Perpetrators are our enemies. They are human enemies. As one philosopher says, "They are persons." A person is, according to one social scientist that is a philosopher, he says, "A person is an acknowledged existence of a being." But a human is a person who has the capacity to execute morals, love, joy, peace, respect, long suffering, kindness, justice, compassion. Are we humans or are we persons? A person is an acknowledged existence of a being, and that's where perpetrators are. Perpetrators are persons, not humans. We hope all of you are humans and come out and support this walk against domestic violence. And we have put in a declaration for the governor to declare the third week in October as Utah Domestic Violence Batterers Awareness Week, because our organization, we put emphasis on the perpetrators, just like roaches, you got to find the source in order to control roaches. You got to go to the source. But our society, we go to the victims. We try to build from the bottom up. You got to go from the top down. Okay, you know that expression about something rolls downhill? Well, I can't say what it is, but you know, you got to go from the top down, you got to start from the top, and so that's what we want to. So if y'all would come out, one more thing. Susan Powell's birthday is going to be the week that we're going to have that walk. I don't know how old she would have been, 32, 33, but her birthday is October the 16th. She's not here with us anymore. So come out and support this walk. Our website is www mojac.info, M-O-J-A-C dot info. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate both of you. In our, that concludes the public comment period. Item 7B, city manager comments. Mr. City Manager, any comments you'd like to make in today's comment period?
I don't have any tonight, sir, thank you.
Item 7C, then city council comments. Anyone on the council would like to say anything tonight? Okay, Mr. Rushton?
I just want to thank Mr. Sherman for coming out tonight and give us an update on the skate park and just let him know that we did have discussion last week in our study meeting, which takes place right before this meeting, about locations and just kind of the pros and cons of each, some of the locations that have come out, but just appreciate him and all the people that are associated with him to make the skate park a reality. So it's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'd echo that. Keep up the good work, Mr. Sherman, and welcome back. And I was going to say to Mr. Johnson, but he left. We ought to get him in touch with our staff about, to coordinate with what we do, because we have quite a business city for domestic violence awareness, but I see our city attorney chased after him and got his info, Eric, and so we're already on top of that, so that's great. What he said's exactly right. It's a big issue, and we take it very seriously in West Valley. This concludes our comment period, and we now go to item number eight, where we will be receiving some public input regarding application related to ordinance 12-38. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce this topic.
Pardon me, didn't have my mic on. Thank you, sir. So 12-38 would contemplate receiving public input on our proposal to update the general plan and update the Fairborn Station vision. Within that, as you know, we had adopted the city center plan some years ago. We're quite a lot further along in that process now, both in terms of planning, understanding of the concept, and actual execution. We've executed quite a bit of the, or quite a few of the items that were included in that original plan. So we now come before the council with a plan updating that. It actually updates not just the concept, but also the actual moniker, so to speak, of what the city center plan before, now the Fairborn Station plan.
Okay, thank you. And as we heard in our study session last week, the plan is just that, it is a plan. It doesn't mean, it's not binding legally or saying this is exactly what will happen. Is that correct, Mr. Pyle? It's more of a general?
Mostly. Like the general plan itself, it is a legal document. It is something you adopt by ordinance as a council, as is this one, but it's also changed often and according to conditions and according to desire of both the council and community.
And so hypothetically, if you had a business come in wanting to do something in an area that wasn't with that, we could still consider it, or if you had a group of residents that said, "We'd rather just stay how we are," we obviously consider all those options and anything in between, right?
Yes, sir.
With that, I will now open the public comment period regarding ordinance 12-38 to approve that updating of the general plan include the Fairborn Station vision. Is there anyone who's come to address us or share their thoughts on that topic? Anyone? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Council, regarding ordinance 12-38, any thoughts, topic, questions, or emotion?
Now we move that we adopt ordinance 12-38. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that motion on the table? Okay, then I'll call up the question. All in favor of approving ordinance 12-38, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That sounds unanimous. We have three items of new business this evening. Mr. Pyle, please introduce for us application S-11-2012.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we have two final plat approvals before us. We're happy to announce that we have further interest and demand for housing development here within the city. We've got Nick Mingo here with us tonight, and we're not asking for a presentation or needing that, but we've been through the process and have the first of two final plat approvals before you in this resolution. This would approve nine lots at 5150 West and 2850 South and then R18 Zone.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council, what's your pleasure on this one?
Mayor, I'll make a comment and then a motion. I was in City Hall when this application was presented, the planning commission had sat in on it, and then we had a detailed discussion on it last week in our study meeting, and it's exciting to see this come down the pipeline, and so I'm excited and ready to vote and move that we approve, where did it go?
S-11.
S-11 2012, final plat approval.
I'll second. And I was going to comment, I am glad to see the larger lot sizes.
Yes, as we discussed this in our study session last week, and just for the sake of scouts or other visitors, we meet at 4:30 each Tuesday and discuss all the items that'll be on the next week's agenda, as well as any other presentations. That, too, is a public meeting next door, the people in the room next door, that anyone's welcome to attend. So if we ever move rather quickly on some of the matters in the formal meeting, it's because we've had at least one week to consider everything at hand, including this one, where we were all quite pleased with the large lots and high quality that Ivory's known for, for this subdivision. Any other comments? Okay, we had a motion, a second, so let's, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving S-11-2012, say aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose? Okay, that is also unanimous. Mr. Pyle, another application by Ivory, S-28-2008.
Thank you, sir. So same concept, this is phase seven of that development, Ivory Place, and we were talking in this instance, 31 lots at 2995 South and 5235 West.
And it's the area just west of Valley Crest Elementary. A quick question of the clerk, the city recorder. The numbering system, S-28-2008, why the older year on that one? Has it, have we just been chewing on it that long?
When they submitted our application, right?
Then the housing market crashed, but we're back again, at least a little bit, so, okay. That's what I thought it was, but want to make sure it wasn't a typo. Council, any motion on this application?
Move for approval of application S-28-2008.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that motion?
See, I think we get, some of us get a little confused on this, because I think this was like phase two or phase one at some point, something we've had as a city council to input on, and glad to see that there'll be a walkway into the elementary school to help, you know, service the little ones that won't have as much need for crossing guard assistance, so.
Okay, great. We have a motion, a second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving S-28-2008, say aye.
Aye.
That also sounds unanimous. We come to item 9C, the Decker Lake Development Plan. We're going to have a little discussion on that tonight. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce that topic.
Thank you, sir. As you know, there are many and varied business interests that are, that the city's concerned with and involved with over in our Decker Lake area, everything from the Maverick Center, which we own, to the restaurants, the hotels, Hollywood Connection, and particular to our case in discussion tonight, the Hill Center Theater, which also, as you know, is a facility that is owned by the city, but is leased by the Hill Center Theater Group. The Hill Center Theater Group is contemplating their future plans, and they have come to speak with us tonight and present some of those ideas and concepts and share them with the council. So we have with us tonight Mr. Brent Lang and Mr. Roger Hendrickson, who we, whom we are very happy to have with us and see tonight, and I'd like to turn over a few moments to them.
Thank you for letting us take a few minutes of your time tonight. I'm Roger Hendrickson. I'm a member of the Executive Committee of the Hill Theater, and have been assisting the theater in considering what to do about the theater and considering what to do about, uh, our, uh, plans for expansion and continuing of the theater, uh, growth that we've experienced over the last few years. We were here, uh, just, just a little over six months ago, I think, and talked with the, uh, council about, uh, some of those plans. We felt like it might be appropriate tonight to give you an update as to where we are in, in our planning process, and, uh, and request that the city, uh, maybe move forward with us in considering a, a lease extension, and also would invite the city to participate in perhaps submitting a proposal for some of the plans that we have. So there, our purpose here is really those two items, uh, to try and reengage on, on the amendment that we were here about a little over six months ago, and then to give you the update on the, uh, expansion. So, um, maybe what we could do, uh, right now is let me just remind you of a couple of things. The Hale Theater itself is the largest-attended, uh, community theater in the United States. This, uh, year and the past year, so we're running on a track record here, will have invited about just shy of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand patrons will come to our, our shows at the theater. We do approximately just under four-hundred shows a year. We, we are at a hundred percent, uh, capacity, and we've been at ninety-eight-plus percent capacity since two thousand and four-ish. And so we, uh, we're, we're, uh, really excited about that success, but, uh, we're also turning away patrons even with that kind of success. Uh, we, we're turning away, on a popular show, upwards of fifteen-thousand people who cannot get tickets, uh, to the theater, 'cause we're just maxed out. So that, uh, that has, uh, presented a, a, uh, dilemma for us. Uh, our mission is to provide affordable, family-friendly theater, uh, to the community. Um, along those lines, we have about six-hundred-plus local actors that have their outlet at, at our theater. Um, but we also, um, the cost of the productions, et cetera, as they move along presses against us, and, uh, if we cannot expand seating, then, um, our revenues will, will suffer and eventually the quality of the theater will be affected. And we're looking long, long range to avoid some of that by, uh, looking at an expansion. I've asked Brent Lane, who is the executive director of the theater, to, uh, just put up a visual for you so that you could get a, a feel of what we're talking about when we talk about an expanded theater. It has changed over time. I think when we first started with the city to talk about expansion, we were talking about building a, a, what we called a jewel box or a black box theater that would be somewhere around two-hundred additional seats. Um, as we have now looked at where we really want to go as a theater and what demand we're experiencing, and the quality of shows that we're now attracting, some pre-Broadway runs and other things are coming towards us, um, our vision of what we think we can do and accomplish in our theater has grown, and as a nonprofit, that's a very exciting thing for us, because we have an opportunity then to provide quality theater that really is kind of Broadway-quality theater to people at an affordable cost. And so, um, our campus is going to expand dramatically, and, and I'll just have Brent take a minute and kind of walk you through kind of the, the size, the number of seating. Um, Brent, if you could talk a little bit about the acreage that we would need and the kind of parking demands that we would have, um, that would probably be useful.
Great. I'll bring this over here so I can pop the mic if I can, if at all possible. This is the, um, the main floor footprint, if you will. There are six levels to this theater, would include all the way down to the bottom of the pit, which many of you that have been over the theater are familiar with that, where the stage is, is stored, all the way up into the fly, flyer areas. We feel like we have a need to, like, like Roger said, a need to expand the number of possible seats that are available to theater. So what we've done is, is, um, we've looked at this very carefully, and one of the things that I think really helps the theater is, uh, is to maintain the intimacy of the center stage and to not be too far back. If you've been to the theater before, and all of you I'm sure have, the farthest row back is nine rows. Well, the new theater would be no more, the theater in the round would be no more than nine rows back. It would just have a little more breadth to it. Um, it'll be not quite as cozy, it'll be a little bit more legroom, and there's more seating capacity. Right now, we're at six-hundred-and-ten seats in our current theater. As you recall, we expanded that three years ago, night, by ninety-one seats, from five-hundred-and-thirty up to six-ten, six-eleven. Anyway, so this seat, this theater would have approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty seats in it, and, uh, would be substantially, um, more technically capable. Uh, we have, um, not only technology in the floor and in some of the bomb areas, but also our ceiling area would be a lot more technically advanced. I don't know if any of you have been down to see some of the Cirque du Soleil shows down in Las Vegas, Love and L'Grave and some of those great shows they do down there. They're just phenomenal. They have people flying around and stuff coming in and out, and it's a lot of fun. That would be something of what, really what we're looking at as far as a new space is concerned. The other thing that we would like to do is, um, provide what's called a proscenium stage. Basically, that's a traditional stage where, um, these people are seated out front of the stage, and this would be all backstage, giving you enough room to operate, bring flies in and all sorts of sets and equipment. Um, it would call, be called a proscenium thrust. We often have referred to this as our jewel box theater. That would be also something that would be about eight-hundred-and-fifty seats. It would be about five-hundred seats on the main level and a balcony of about three-hundred-and-fifty. Okay, so if you're doing the math there, we're right now at about seventeen-hundred seats versus our six-ten. Um, the additional thing that we would think would be really great for a community is to, over on this far side, offer a black box theater. If not, if you're not familiar with the black box, it's very much like a flex space. You could do a piano recital there, you could do a small children's show there, you could have, um, a community presentation, a community production. That'd be something that would really want to open up to the community in a big way and have them come in the facility and use the, and, and use the amenities that are involved there and really open that up. These main stages would be mostly, um, used by the theater. As far as square footage for the entire theater, um, let me just, let me just give you some features here. We, we'd like to have, um, a porticocher right here in the front where we can have a pull-through, um, similar to what we have now, but a little bit more formalized, where people can drop people off and they can come into the theater. Uh, we'd like to have maybe some side entrances based on where our parking, parking might be. Um, as you can see here, you've got a, the main box office here, you've got kind of a, um, just a reception area here in the main lobby. You've got concessions back here, you've got plenty of restrooms. We've got a large shop in the back that's connected to each theater, which makes a whole lot of sense. Uh, on the second floor, which would be the area where the actors would be, would be dressing rooms and the green room and so forth in this center, in this center pod area. But on the other side, over here on the far side, I can't really reach it too well, but over on this side would be, um, rehearsal space on the main floor, and then on the second space, it would be a set aside, second floor, excuse me, it'd be truly the fourth floor if you count the two lower, but this would be the main second floor, go on, sort of the basement, one a basement, two. Second floor would be mostly an education wing, so that we can do a lot of, a lot more education. As part of our mission is to provide, uh, theater education for the community, and we would hope to be able to do that. A lot of people that come, as you know, our summer camps fill up just instantly, and everyone says it's great, it's cheaper than, it's cheaper than babysitting. So, anyway, and they, the kids have an absolute riot there. If any of your children have ever been involved, they have a great time. So, all in all, with all the floors, including, uh, you don't see any offices on this space, we're gonna put the offices up and out of the way and keep them, keep them off the main floor. And so, all, all in all, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet compared to our current, what do we remain, forty-three, forty-two, forty-two? Forty, I think we're forty-three-thousand square feet right now.
Excuse me, so the actual building's two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet?
Every, yeah, all, all together.
Not counting parking, or?
No. That's, that's, that's just the footprint of the building, including all the square footage on all the floors. Okay, so divided over six floors. Okay. As far as, um, the footprint to put this on, it, it fits pretty snug with a parking structure. If we were to do a, a multi-layer parking structure, um, to fit that many people, we'd need about eight-hundred-and-sixty parking, parking stalls, and, uh, that would be about eight-and-a-half acres if we were to put a parking structure. If we're gonna streetpark this, it's gonna be about eleven acres to streetpark this, this facility to have enough to make it all happen. Kind of an exciting facility. There's a lot of hosting areas around here, so we can make sure that the host, the, the sponsors are hosted. A lot of people come down, do corporate nights over at the theater, or they bring their corporation in, they do, uh, banks come in, uh, mortgage companies come in, all sorts of different companies come in and bring their clients, they bring vendors. We have a lot of fun. So there's, there's two levels of these reception rooms, uh, first floor and second floor. On either side, there's, um, other catering services capability, um, rental rooms, if you will, for bigger parties up on the second floor in the back area here, up over the, kind of the restroom area here. Yeah, kind of a, a grander vision of what we've been able to accomplish, and we think, you might say, "Well, how you gonna fill it up? How you gonna go from six-hundred-and-ten seats to fill seventeen-hundred in?" We don't think we'll do that overnight. We didn't, we didn't get to where we are right now overnight. It took us a few years. As you recall, when we put our contract together, the initial time, we built it so that we could grow into it a little bit. Well, we've grown into it, now we've grown out of it, right? Unfortunately. But it's a reality, and, and the, the frustrating thing is, is we're, we're where we were back in South Salt Lake, where we're having people call up and they can't get a ticket, and they get frustrated and don't call back. And so if we're not advancing, we're really going backwards, 'cause we're just upsetting people that really can't get in and want to, and they're not get, they're getting out of the habit of coming. One thing I think that's really kind of fun, if you think of Utah Jazz and what a great facility they are, all the major football leagues, their football stadiums and the, well, the, two of the majors, and there's more than two majors in this, in this state. But we have twenty, almost twenty-four-thousand season ticket holders at Hale Center Theater. Put that in perspective, BYU football has probably about forty to forty-four-thousand season ticket holders. University of Utah football has about, probably about thirty-thousand season ticket holders. Utah, and Hale Center Theater's at twenty-four as an arts organization. That's something, that's saying quite a bit. And then the other arts organ, or the other organization I quoted was the Utah Jazz, and they have just, well, they have fewer than twelve-thousand season ticket holders. So when you think about this arts organization and how it's flourished in this community, community theater's a one-billion-dollar-a-year industry in the United States, and we own almost one percent of it right here in West Valley City. That's saying a lot. We've got a wonderful partnership. We would love, as Roger mentioned, and I'll let him conclude up here, and I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the facility. We would love to be able to re-up and look at how we can make something like this happen and even bookend and make this place a bigger arts mecca for the, for the state and for our region, for our area. I'll note that we have season ticket holders from every county in the state, we have season ticket holders from every bordering state, and we have had at one point in time, season ticket holders from every state in this union. So, it's pretty fun. We don't always, all the time. Some fall off, some fall out. People are coming in for business, they buy season tickets, and when they're here on a weeknight, they'll come and enjoy a show. So it's pretty phenomenal. The fun, we have a lot of fun stories to tell, and those are a few of them.
So the vision becomes a reality if we can figure out a way to fund it, right?
Of course.
And find the land for it. And, uh, I know that your staff has, uh, been exploring possibilities for land within the city and, and, uh, continues to do that. We have a lease with the city that expires at the end of twenty sixteen, and, uh, if you look at a design and a build timeline on something like this, to anticipate somewhere in the, the range of thirty to thirty-two months is not unusual. Um, and, and so backing that off twenty sixteen, um, it, what I'm trying to emphasize is we're, we're right at the point as a board where we're in decision-making mold. Uh, we've been gathering information now for about two years about, you know, what can we do, what would be the cost of what we're going to do or want to do. Um, can it happen here in West Valley? If it can't work, happen here in West Valley, where could it happen? Who will be the partner with us on this? Because, uh, as we've gone out, uh, we've talked to our major donors and stakeholders in the theater, and there's a lot of excitement there. We have what, what I would call soft commitments, uh, by people who are willing to, uh, contribute in a significant way towards the theater. Uh, we need a, a municipal partner, we're hoping that, uh, which is the second theme that, uh, I was going to ask for tonight. It's an ambitious proposal, but it is one that we need to move forward on as a theater, and, and we've been exploring with the city what that might mean in terms of, uh, city support. It would be, in our view, a similar approach to what we did our last time here, where we engage, uh, the city to do some bonding for us, and then we retire the bond with our, uh, rent payments on the theater. And we are trying to minimize the amount of bonding we would need by a significant fundraising effort. And the fundraising effort needs to precede the issuance of the bonds, obviously. And so, uh, we're right at the juncture now where we believe we need to move forward with fundraising in order to make our timelines work. Um, because twenty sixteen, the way our lease works with you is, uh, twenty sixteen comes, and we do have a, a build-in option to renew the lease, but it is at a lease rate to be negotiated or determined, which we have not been able to arrive at with the city. And as a result, at least from my perspective as a, as an executive committee member, I'm looking at this as a bit of a cliff for us, um, at the end of twenty sixteen, because we don't know what our arrangement could be with the city. And as a result, we're having to scramble at this point to put in place what our plans might, uh, be. It would assist us greatly, uh, both in our future planning and also in remaining in the city, if we could figure out a way to, to get a, uh, amendment together that would allow us to stay, uh, in West Valley City in the existing facility, uh, so that this timeline doesn't compress, uh, and put undue pressure on, uh, our decision-making at the theater. Um, so those, that's kind of, uh, in a nutshell, what we're about. We offer all that by way of information. There's a lot there, there's a lot more that we could share, and we would invite any of the council, uh, that would like to, to call us, um, let us know what information you need. We're willing to, to come, or have you come to the theater, we can come back to the city and, in a different setting, kind of roll up our sleeves and tell you all of the details or answer any of the questions you might have, uh, about what our planning is. But, uh, we are sending, sensing a sense of urgency and the need to kind of move forward in a significant way at this point, i-if, if the city is able to do that.
Thank you, Roger and Brent. Um, one question I have, well, a couple of questions. And just for the sake of the, of the scouts and other attendees today, uh, part of the beauty of the, of partnership the city had with Hale Center Theater when the theater was first built, was the city took out the bond to build the building, and the city owns the building, uh, but the rent that Hale Center Theater has been paying us to use that building has perfectly covered, uh, the bond payments, so the taxpayers haven't had to pay a penny of that, uh, besides some, uh, some maintenance and, and maybe a little bit of soft time, the staff's been involved. And so, kudos to the theater for their rent payments paying the bond payments all the way through twenty sixteen, which of course, as you mentioned, is when the, the rent is, the contract is up, but also when the, the bond is completely paid.
Right.
So it is, it's been a great partnership. And, uh, you look at Ruth and Nathan Hale's very first plays, were here for the Old Granger Ward House on thirty-two-hundred west, thirty-fifth south, back in the thirties. And so that, the roots run very deep for the Hales, uh, in this community. So it's a very intriguing proposal, to say the least. Um, a couple of questions. What, i-is there any possibility where you could use the existing building or stage and build out a, a round at this sort of structure or, or a campus setting using the existing building? Or in the view of the board, is this something that has to be completely new?
Well, what we're, what we're being told by our designers is that the, to retrofit the existing structure to do what we need to do would be prohibitively expensive. If you can think of it, uh, right now, we have a smaller, uh, stage area in the center, but it does a lot of really fun things. It'll twist and go up and down, and we can put water in it, and all sorts of things. But we can't do anything with the ceiling, and so what we have to do for the roof is to, you would have to pop that roof entirely off and then build back in all of the structural support to support this new fly system that we're talking about. we're talking about. So if you think about what the floor does right now, that plus more is what the ceiling could do. So you would have the ceiling moving, you would have people being able to come down out of the ceiling, come back up into the ceiling, and Peter Pan can fly over the audience, the chandelier and Phantom can come swinging out, things of that nature. So, so from a technical and cost standpoint, it's difficult to do that, as well as, because we need more seating capacity in the theater of the round, we have to expand the size of the seating. And if you go there now, we've kind of maxed out what the exterior of that can do. So it's, it's a bit of a challenge to do that. We've talked about alternative uses for the existing structure, in terms of the program of the theater, as to whether or not it could be utilized in its current form in a, in a particular way. And we were running different scenarios to see how that might work and, and do a program within the existing theater. But to do it for kind of the main stage is a bit of a challenge.
One other quick question, then I'll, I'll see if council asks questions as well. The, currently, several blocks to the north, there's a, you have your warehouse where people can rent costumes, and it's the storage for, for all your productions. Would that all be brought in-house in, in one big new theater? Or would that facility still be needed? Just curious. Could you use the microphone, Brent, just for recording this place? Thanks.
Yeah, that's a great question. The old costume shop would enter right in here, and all the costumes would be stored in the basement level of this building. The majority of that shop, which is about, come on, Brent, I'm going to say about 8,000 of our 40,000 square feet over there, maybe 10,000 or 40,000 would be, would be housed here. So all of our construction would take place right on site. And so, yeah, that would mostly be storage at that point over at the other warehouse.
So that'd be more efficient, both for your actors and your theater, as well as for the customers who come through?
Completely more efficient, yeah. Over there, if you've been to the costume shop over there, it's not our best foot forward. It's functional, but it's not our best foot forward. And we think this is a really nice solution for both those things. The shop, the technical guys would die to build on-site. It makes it a lot more functional for them, instead of having to truck it back and forth all the time when they build these big monster sets.
Okay. We have some council members with questions. Mr. Mueller?
I think, I think I have a couple of questions for Wayne. Mr. Pyle, the current site, do you know how many acres that is?
The current site that would be potentially expanded on to?
Where the theater is now, what they're leasing from us now.
Yeah, I actually can't remember. Nicole? Oh, okay, right here. It's right in front of me, sorry, pardon. Yeah, it is four acres.
Four acres. So we're looking to almost three times that much acreage to do this project. And then is this a costume stop, or costume shop, storage area, does that belong to the city?
No.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, hi Roger.
Hi.
It's good to see you here again. And just to make sure that I'm clear, I mean, the idea isn't to tear down an old theater, not rent shows for three years while you build a new theater, but you need to keep the old theater going for 32 months, however long it's going to be, while you build a new theater, move into the new theater, but then you no longer have any use for the old theater. Is that right?
Couple of questions in what you asked there. We do not want to go dark, so the intent would be to begin our main, main stage theater productions on January 1, 2017, and have the new theater in place by that time period. With respect to the old theater, we, part, part of the issue is we don't know quite how that works, and we've got this new theater to fill. But at the same time, there are certain kinds of shows, certain kinds of programs we've looked at for the old theater that would allow us to continue some performances in it. Things we've considered are kind of a orient, a children's oriented type of a venue, other kinds of productions that we could put in, things that wouldn't compete necessarily with what we're doing over in this main stage theater. If, if we can make that pencil financially, then it, we would, we would like to preserve and continue to use that old theater. If we can't make that work financially, then we would likely move just entirely into the new theater. But that is, that's a decision we haven't gotten to at the executive committee, nor has it been proposed to our board. So at this point, it's just a lot of investigation and assumptions that we're making.
Because I think that factors into what we might want to do if we are left with a, an empty theater, or if this is really not a replacement and expansion, you want to have the old theater too and plan to fill all of these theaters. And I don't doubt that you can do that, and I think that's exciting too. And I'd like to have this continue in West Valley City, but as far as what commitment we might make and investment we might make, it concerns me as to what's going to happen with the old theater. And I would like to know, just so we could plan around that. Are we looking at maybe demolishing that and having that land to sell to somebody else that we can use to help finance this project? Or are we looking at just expanding what Hale Center Theater is doing in West Valley City?
Yeah, good, good questions, things that we could explore with the city. Again, my, my personal view at this point is that using the old theater doesn't work well. If we're going to expand the campus and you, you come up with 11 acres that's independent of that four, then that, that is something we can all look at to see what we can do with the old structure. If you're planning to use the four acres as a part of that 11, then it would, it would suggest that the old theater would be taken out and then we would build a new one in, in that location.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to find out, is what you really want. Because if we find 11 and a half acres a mile away, you might not want that theater. But if we find it, if we can, you know, attach to that, then maybe you do. But I, you know, I'm kind of trying to struggle with what the theater wants.
Yeah, so what Brent is saying is that it depends on what the financial package is for the old theater. When I, when I talk about it penciling, if it can work financially for us, then we're willing to continue to use that old, the old theater, I shouldn't call it the old theater, the existing location, in, in a way that would still contribute to the community and fulfill our mission. If we can do that in, in the existing theater at the same time as the new one, then we're very excited about that. If we don't feel like we can do that, if we're feeling like we have to subsidize the existing location to keep it open, then that would be a damper on our, on our mission and, and we wouldn't be excited about that. In terms of where we locate, it's really important to us that we have ready access to, to the freeway, that there's visibility from the theater, from the freeway. So there are some factors we look at. I think we have about six or seven deciding factors that we've adopted in terms of looking at venues.
Sure. And to be clear, I'm not suggesting you do one thing or the other with the theater. I'm just trying to find the answer to that question so we can discuss how it best serves you.
Yeah, I think it's, when we started out early on, there was discussion of our continuing in the existing theater at a fairly, a reduced rent from where we are today, but much more than we were comfortable in continuing. And, and given that scenario, our preference would be not to continue in the, in the old theater. If, if we can get those terms to a point where it makes sense that we can perform, do performances in the theater at a, at a break-even or a little bit better, because, you know, we're not in it for profit, then we would, we would love to continue. And that, so that's just a function, I think, of the discussions that we need to have. What we'd proposed on the lease extension was that we would step in and take over some of the routine maintenance sorts of things that the city has been doing. And, but, but that would constitute essentially our rent to remain in the facility in exchange for our agreeing to perform a certain number of performances or hold a certain number of events in the theater during that extension period. So we did have some discussions with Mr. Pyle and the staff about that and are hoping to continue with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Enson?
Yeah, and similar questions to Councilman Mueller's. If we were to find a piece of property that was, that was in close proximity to this, and you were able to move between the old theater and the new, the new facility, and would that make it more attractive than having to go across the valley and operate a separate facility?
Well, yes, but in terms of the program for the new theater, it really is designed from an operational cost standpoint to capture some synergies between the two kinds of theaters, so that, for example, we have actors or actresses that are in one show, performing, and they're cast in the next one to come up. And so, and I, don't tell me how they do this, I, my mind does not work this way, but they literally leave the stage, go backstage and rehearse the new show, and then when their cue comes up, they shift mindset somehow in a way I don't quite get, and come back on stage and perform the, in the, the new show. That could not happen with a split venue. So, so when we talk about potentially using the existing theater at the same time the new theater is on, it would be a different kind of a program we'd have to come up with in order to make that work financially and operationally for us.
Okay, any other questions?
Just, just remind us again, Roger, what are the two things you're asking of us specifically tonight?
Thank you. And I understand that it's not noticed for action, so.
Right. No, we're starting to get into dream world a little bit here with theaters and everything, and I guess it's like, okay, time to come back to earth and business, so if you'd just remind us.
Excellent, thank you. So the first thing that we had done back in February when we were here last, we had negotiated a potential lease extension with staff, and that draft, I believe you received, or if not, you could, could receive it. We would like to move forward to conclude that amendment, along the terms that were stated at the time that we negotiated it in February. That would be the first action item. That allows us time to explore what the city might be able to do on the larger proposal without facing that cliff that I mentioned. That's the first item. The second item is to determine the level of interest that the city might have in participating as our partner on the expanded campus. And, and that one is a discussion that we need to talk about in terms of, you know, what are projected costs? How much bonding would the city be able or be willing to extend to us? How much are we willing to pay in rent to retire that bond? And how do, how well do you trust our fundraising capacities to take that risk with us? But, but that proposal is really important to us to understand the depth of the city's interest, and whether or not the city has the heart and the capacity to link arms and move forward with us. And we don't doubt at all your support of the theater in the past. It's been marvelous, it really has been. But, but we're now looking at a vista that, we're wondering, are you still with us in that venture, given that it's a lot larger performing campus, and we have a need to move fairly rapidly at, at this late date to, to accomplish something? Does that have, help, Mr. Enson?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
What other questions? Mr. Enson?
Wayne, remind us what the original bond was for the Hale Center Theater. Was it $12 million?
Uh, no, let's see here, sir, and I always forget these numbers as I go along as well, but the bond cost was only 7.6 million. You're probably thinking about the original cost of the total theater, which was roughly 11 million.
Okay. And so other than 11, 11 million, we bonded for?
About seven and a half.
Seven and a half. And then the, the rest was through private donations?
Private donations, fundraising, a lot of those lines. Brent's, Brent's probably actually a bit more familiar with that than I am.
Four, four million dollars was, was raised, 4.3 million dollars was bonded, and the remainder of that 11 was the land that was contributed by the city. So that's how I recall it, and that, I think that's pretty close.
Between the four and the land, that's probably where I'm thinking of my seven and a six total.
So, so. I was in the back room there, yeah. I think we're there.
Good.
So between the land costs and what we contributed was something happening.
Right, right.
So that included the land cost.
My memories, yeah. We didn't own the land at the time, we had to go buy the land.
And so if, if, if we're looking at similar numbers, I guess I'm wondering what, and we haven't talked about numbers here, and so, and I don't know if you want to talk numbers. So I, I just, I guess we have to get a feel of what the gap is, if, if we're looking at doing another $7 million or, you know, that, that amount, what's the fundraising gap that's going, going to have to be?
Right, and, and those are discussions we can have in the future. It's, you know, it's still pretty preliminary right now. I don't know if we would want to talk about that tonight. We do have a pretty good idea, just from what Roger and Brent have talked to us about, what that could be gap-wise. And it's significant. I mean, it's not, not to minimize, the question's a very good one, because that will be one of the key things that this whole deal would hinge on, what that capability, and Roger alluded to it, or Brent did.
Yeah, and, and again, because there are a lot of moving parts into the, into the financing side of this, we've actually developed a financial model that we could sit down with the, the city and walk through and say, well, if you fundraise at this level, and the costs are at this level, then what's the bond? And if the bond coupon amount goes up, you know, interest rates go up, how does that affect us? We've got a fairly sophisticated model that we could sit down and, and walk you through. But the, the short answer is, we're anticipating that the, the bonding would be a fair amount above the, the amount that you just mentioned. Our fundraising requirement would be in the tens of millions to carry this off. And we're prepared to move forward with all of that at this point. And we've, we're designing this so that the cost of those bonds will be covered by our rent, and we're very sensitive as to the amount of rent we're willing to pay. And so we're highly incentivized to get our fundraising up and running so that we can minimize the bond. And that's really our primary focus. But the first thing we need is a stake in the ground, you know, where is the 11 acres or the eight acres if we do a structure? And, and, you know, what does that package kind of start to look like?
Well, just, just, just for me personally, I would love to, to see Hale Center Theater remain in the city and see him expand here. I think we've always had a vision of the Decker Lake area being kind of the entertainment capital of Salt Lake County and, and the state of Utah. And I think that, I think that still was our vision, to, to see that, that area grow as a, as a cultural and entertainment area. So I think, for me, I think I'd like to see that we do everything that we, we can within reason to make it happen. Just one other question. If you had these two theaters plus the, the existing theater, we're talking 2,300 seats, and, and Salt Lake's going to build the new 2,700-seat theater. I, I just wonder how that's going to affect potential ticket sales, potential fundraising, and those types of things. Do you kind of have a handle on that? Is it a different group of people that they're targeting versus what, what you target?
Yeah, so I did bring my crystal ball with me here tonight, but the answer is, we're supportive of the Salt Lake Performing Arts Center and the efforts they're making there. They serve a different patron base generally than our theater strives for. So there is a, a layer of patrons that love theater, love quality theater, and are willing to pay to come to quality theater, but not at 100 bucks a ticket, right? And, and so it's that patron base that we seek for. And, and so in our mind, all of the excitement that is building around that downtown theater is raising the awareness of people generally to theater and the arts in the valley. And to coin a phrase, or not coin one, but to repeat a phrase, when the tide raises, all the boats go up. And that's our view of things. And so we, we don't believe that that will impact our patron base. In fact, we think it probably. In fact, we think it probably highlights the fact that there's great quality theater here, and there's an alternative to paying those kinds of ticket prices.
Just one other statement, and again, this is just from Councilman Vincent. I would recommend that we work to some sort of agreement with their current lease, the future lease, to somehow make it possible for them to stay here. But I think we, on the flip side, we need a commitment from the Health Center Theater too, that if we make a reasonable lease arrangement with them, that they will make a commitment towards us as well.
Yeah, and you deserve that. And we thought we had gotten that done in the draft lease amendment, which you all have not passed on or reviewed. But we would love to engage in that dialogue and see if we've balanced those interests appropriately in the draft that was prepared.
All right. Well, thank you for coming today. Very exciting plans, and how we get from this stage to reality is, I guess, the challenge at hand. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
For sharing some of that vision with us tonight.
Well, and we appreciate you allotting as much time as you did for us tonight. We didn't intend to take as much time, but we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We come to the next item on the agenda, which is executive session, and I understand there may be a need for executive session for the dispersal of real estate tonight. Would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead and second that, but this motion be concluding our housing authority.
Yes, we'll accept the amendment to that motion. With that, we will adjourn the regular meeting, accept the executive session, so that we can have our housing authority meeting and then go into executive session.
Okay. So we'll hereby call to order this special meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority. Now, we've had an opening ceremony, and all members of this board are present. We have one resolution tonight, and ask Mr. Wayne Pyle to introduce that for us, please.
Thank you, sir. We're proposing the sale of a publicly-owned housing unit, a single-family home at 5156 West Berkman Way, for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, similar to other sales the Housing Authority's performed recently. Any questions or clarification on this one? Not emotions in order?
I'd like to know, Wayne, why the first offer fell through?
I'd have to refer to Lane, but I'm not sure why it fell through, sir.
The person who made the offer could not get a loan.
Do we know if it was because it didn't appraise high enough to get, that he could get the financing, or?
No, they couldn't get financing at all.
Was there a motion made?
No.
I'll make it.
I'm waiting for you.
Good for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1226. Is there any discussion to that motion? Now, call the question, and ask those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
That appears to be unanimous, and seeing no other business before this, the Housing Authority stands adjourned.
Housing Authority's through the main.